I see that, it looks like Councilman Snell's lost some weight.
Yeah, he looks pretty good there.
Sleep.
May I suspect you have a number for Cruz?
Yeah, he's not going to be able to make it through this portion. So he'll, uh, tell me, we'll just check in with him. He would let us know. On the phone? Yeah. Are you ready to record? Ready to record? Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you out to the special city council meeting today on Thursday, March 17th. Appreciate all of you in attendance. Uh, the purpose of this earlier meeting is a review and discussion of purchasing procedures. We've allotted ninety minutes for this discussion. Actually, I'd like to conclude, hopefully ninety, eighty-five minutes, so that we have a few minutes break before our seven o'clock meeting. Uh, but with that, we'll count that as our opening and, and move right into the discussion. As a, as a reminder, a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, we met as a city council in a Saturday work session. And one of our discussions that we had intended on having was review of, discussion of purchasing procedures. Actually, one point of order, Councilmember Snell is currently out of town and is planning on joining us via telephone. He is still tied up in his meetings and, uh, won't be able to join us, uh, right now. But, uh, I asked him to send me a message when he is able to and we'll take a brief, uh, break and, and, uh, and invite him to the meeting or, or call him when that time comes. So review of discussion of purchasing procedures is our topic. Uh, remind me, council, where we left it and where you'd like to start your, your discussion?
So I, I think that the only thing we really talked about that we made changes to was the limit. That, uh, we dropped it down from fifty thousand down to, was it fifteen thousand?
Yes.
And, and that was all we really had time and then we had decided we were going to meet again and make further changes. And so, that's kind of all we discussed and talked about so far.
And I just add, because of the way that came up with no previous materials and sort of writing on the fly in a council meeting, I'm still confused, I guess, what it means because there's so many different levels. For example, zero, everything requires sort of open market procedures, informal, zero dollars, zero dollars, which is lower than most other communities I've looked at, to five thousand dollars. And then, a little more formal, above five thousand, twenty-five thousand for services. Like professional services or that sort of thing. And then presumably fifty thousand for like construction projects. And so when we say, "We lowered it to fifteen thousand," I'm thinking, okay, which one did we lower? Because there's also a twenty-five thousand dollar council approval. So, so did we lower just the council approval or did we lower, uh, the one for services? Uh, or the one for construction contracts or both? Did we lower it to say that those require formal, uh, the most formal level of bid process with contracts? Is it in the aggregate? Is it, uh, single? Is it for perhaps ongoing contracts to perform maintenance? You know, I mean, there's just a lot of questions about how that's to actually be interpreted or applied. So, and that's, I think, the danger of just trying to make changes on the fly in a council meeting before we've really studied it or, or, you know, had a chance to draft what our potential changes would be and how we could improve it. And just one last comment, too. There's the words on the page, but there's also the workflow process. And I think anything we do has to consider that workflow process as well and how that impacts the process. There's always a trade-off and a balance between the level of control. It's kind of like, if you think of a car, you could build a car that there'd be zero fatalities. But it would weigh ten tons, it would get three miles to the gallon, and it would cost a million dollars and no one could afford it. You know, so what's the appropriate level of, for Kaysville? That also makes a difference between size of community because obviously the larger the community, the larger the revenue base, the more controls you can afford to carry. And you have to maybe improvise with a smaller community to still have very effective controls, but not have a Rube Goldberg design, you know, for every possible situation that can come up. So just sort of my opening, big picture thoughts, I guess, on sort of...
Just a quick contrast, uh, Mr. Garn, uh, to the, the ten-ton, you know, Sherman tank vehicle. That you imply, you know, if we put the city inside of a Sherman tank, then we're restricted. Well, what's the opposite of that? What, opposite of that is where I feel we're, that we're at, you know? And, you know, I've got substantial, substantial reasons why I feel that way. But, you know, I feel we're completely the opposite. I feel like we're just riding on the back of a, of an eagle, no seatbelt, no parachute. So, there's, there's the inverse of what you said, too.
Yeah, I wouldn't disagree with that.
And I'd be open to be proven wrong.
I would disagree with part of it because I just, I, I don't know that I have evidence to say that we're on the opposite end. But what I wouldn't disagree with is that it's finding the right place. It's finding the right balance.
Oh, yeah. Totally.
And that's a little more complicated. I don't know, that, at least I can't do that just flying by the seat of my pants. I need, you know, data and, uh, you know...
We've got to rewire your left and right brain with an ADD bridge. And then, and then you'll know how I live my life. No, I mean, I, I appreciate your, your input on that. I, I see where you're going with that and I see where some of the commentary is, is maybe aimed at. But Jake, to be quite honest with you, if, if you don't start somewhere, where do you start?
No, and I agree with that, too.
Whether it's on the fly, whether it's, uh, you know, chapter and verse, biblical, whatever it may be, where do you start?
Well, it's interesting. In fact, even the procedures themselves say that if they should be, that the policy itself should be regularly, uh, revisited from time to time. Recommend to the city from time to time such new or revised procurement rules and regulations as are desirable and in conformance with other statutory requirements. So it's right in the procedure that it's meant to be reviewed, so...
Yeah, I agree. I think it should be a living document, you know, because the economy changes, times change, right? So that basically says it should be a living document.
Size of the city changes and...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and I think that's what we're experiencing. We're just experiencing a lot of growth and...
Yeah.
Yeah. Cool.
Agreed.
Okay, for the sake of discussion now, let's, uh, you know, I would like to just ask the question, why do cities have purchasing agreements? And I think that that's probably something that needs to be discussed. Why, what's the reason for having that and having those controls?
It's the lock your door theory. If you don't, right? You know, if you don't lock them, if you don't lock your doors at home, I believe anyway. I was even told this by one of our large vendors in the city that actually lives within the walls of our city and owns a sizable company outside of the city. And he says, "Dave, so, he says, "The doors just aren't locked." He says, "You know, all the, all the invoices I, that, that come through my office for the city, the doors are just wide open." You know, and, and the theory there is you keep the honest, honest, and, and I think it's an important principle. That was actually the principle that he shared with me, was that, hey, just lock the doors up.
No, I agree.
And just one more thing would be, um, I mean, I've seen this and I think, you know, uh, several of us here have been, I worked most of my career in private industry and it's amazing what competitive bids do in order to get the service that you want, the level of quality you want, at a price lower than if you didn't do competitive bids. I mean, I've seen it happen over and over again, so that's another reason for a procurement policy. And we, we write things down so we can be consistent. You know, that's why we want to have written policies, even though I believe by and large, most, uh, most managers, purchasing managers, either in the private sector or public sector, naturally want to get the lowest price possible at the quality they can get. I mean, they have no, they have no personal benefit from not doing that and every reason to do that, whether the profitability of the company or whether keeping their job by being efficient in, in the public sector and, and doing the best for the taxpayers, there's a natural motivation to want to do that. But we write it down so we can be consistent and improve it and reflect back on what we've done before, then tweak it and see how we can make it even better, so...
No, I agree. I, uh, I think what happens, though, is, uh, I think it's really important to have that document and we, we need to review it and have it in policy. And the reason is, there's a tendency, if it's, if it's very general and it gives a lot of latitude. I mean, it's a wonderful thing, uh, you know, and if, if you have your personal business, you have every right to be doing. But I, I don't think we have that right when, when we're a government entity. And the reason is, is because we're dealing with somebody else's money, which is the taxpayers', and we have to represent them. I think one of the concerns is, is if, if you don't, if you don't have these in place, what happens is, is there becomes a, a point where it just gets easy and there's, there's friendships developed, there's, uh, you know, ways of doing things and, and there's not a consistency in always looking, uh, ways to improve ourselves and to be more efficient and, and to reach out. Um, I know one of the concerns that, uh, that I have through a lot of the people that, uh, you know, that I knew that does business around this area. There are some that just don't do business in Kaysville and the reason is, is they've kind of been shut on the outside and they don't have that opportunity. And I think that there's, uh, there's been those, those friendships and, I mean, the city's comfortable with who they can use and the ones, and, and hey, they, maybe they do a great job and I'm sure they do. But I guess the concern is, is we want to allow everyone to have that opportunity to bid and, and have that opportunity to, to provide service. And when we do that, the people, you know, we may not need or use the new people, but it sure keeps the ones that are doing the work much more honest and they have to be more competitive. And, and I think that that's the, the whole key. I guess the thing that we need to do, I, first of all, we can't, uh, you know, I'm no expert in this area, just not. I, I know a little bit about it, but, uh, I'm, I don't feel that we have the ability to sit there and, and write these kind of things. But I think that we need to have the input to do it. What I would like to see is, is maybe we can go through and, and take a look at some of the things that maybe we have concerns about, some of the things that are positive about it. And we need to probably create a list and, and, and have these things in place that when, you know, when we have a new city manager or whatever, you know, this, we could look at it, have time to look at them. And I noticed when we went through the, uh, the process and, you know, we've all looked at the applications, several of these applicants, I mean, that's, they did this stuff. I mean, that was part of their thing, is they wrote purchasing procedures for the cities and different things. So they have a certain amount of expertise in this area that perhaps we don't. But with our input, I think that it, that'd be a, a good way of, of moving forward. But I think that we, it's a good opportunity for us here today. We don't have a lot of time. I mean, in reality, we could spend a lot of time on this, on every little detail. I don't know if that's necessary. But I think what'd be good is, is maybe go through and look at some of the things that maybe we're concerned about and we can have a consensus. We can write them down and then when, when the time comes, then we can move forward on it and come up with something that's reasonable for the city as, as well as the citizens of Kaysville. Because I, I agree with you, Jake, and I agree with Dave, there has to be a balance. There really does. I mean, we can make this so tight that the city can't do anything. And this would be, this would be, uh, then you're, you're losing productivity on that side of it, you know? Yeah, so you ha, you have to create a lock to keep the honest people honest. But you also, you can't make the lock so, so tough that it's so expensive or people keep forgetting the code. And so I, you know, they have to be able to have a rule that they can live by as well.
Yeah, beautiful. I mean, the lock can't be so strong they can't even get out of their own home in the morning to go to work, right? Along the theory of locking your doors. So, yeah, they're, the happy medium is where the beauty of it is. I mean, I was joking around about, and people may or may not like this, but we were joking around the other day about American punishment versus, you know, punishment of other nations and, and other faiths. And it's like the two opposite extremes, right? We're, we're really lenient on people to where people almost want to come and live in our jail cells because it's better, a better circumstance for them than other countries. You know, you get, you get, well, I'll just leave out some of the details of the comment, but you can imagine, you know, the punishments in other countries. But I like what you say. I think this boils down to a simple law of, uh, supply and demand. It boils down to economics 101. Because you think about it, some of this is the Walmart theory, if, in my head, and let me explain. Walmart, when they come to town, they force competition into the marketplace. You know, some people like that, some people don't. You know, but with their presence, they force prices, they push pricing down. And, and they're not trying to do that to, to hurt the mom and pops or anything of that nature. They're just saying, "Look, we're bigger, we have more buying power. You need to compete with us or you probably aren't going to, you know, you're not going to, you're not going to make the cut." So I think that's what a purchasing procedure does on, on a level for, for all of us as citizens in the city here, is it's the Walmart theory. It just says, "Hey, look, you've got to compete or you're not going to make the cut." And I love where you went with that, Councilmember Page. I just want to, if everybody can see me at home, everybody here, what I have here is this, is the state's procurement code. And this was actually, uh, you know, documentation that the state encouraged to be imposed. Um, it had a mandate in 2014, May of 2014, that all, um, like water districts and some forms of municipalities had to adopt some form of this, all of it modified, but they had to adopt, you know, a degree of it or the bulk of it. So it was actually imposed upon them by the state. I just want to show you in comparison, if you can see that on the camera, you know, it's a pretty healthy document, right? You know, and that might be like Larry's huge, massive master lock, right? I mean, that might be impenetrable. But then you compare our, ours, and it's right there, if you can see that at home. You know, so perhaps in between these two documents is the happy medium for Kaysville. You know, so some of the issues that I see where we currently are at, um, you know, is change orders. And I love what you say, Larry, because literally, we'll be here all night going through this and I actually have copies for everybody and just, just want to take a gander. Um, but, you know, some of the things are, are, you know, I mean, Larry, you alluded to friendships that might, you know, develop. You know, and, and, you know, we're, we're all susceptible to human nature, we're all susceptible to complacency. You know, but I think that's where this document comes into place and helps break up complacency. And I believe that's why the state enacted that back in 2014. You know, you, you could have issues with change orders, you know, you could have issues which, you know, uh, you could have issues with collusion where, where favors are made or, you know, that sort of thing is done. You know, and I, like I said, I think some of it was the complacency and, you know, some of it's probably proper for an argument for another day. Um, you know, cronyism, that's actually, I'm reading folks right here from out of this book, so, um, don't think I'm being brutal with my words here. Um, favored vendor, well, I'll just start at the top, collusion, cost analysis, cost data, cronyism, favored vendor, um, bid rigging schemes, writing specifications that are overly restrictive or written in, in a way that gives an unfair advantage to a particular vendor, improperly splitting purpose, purchases to avoid use of a standard competitive procurement process. And, and these are actually, folks, I mean, although the state hasn't imposed this on Kaysville yet, these things I speak of are actually in the Utah State Code and are absolutely not legal to do. Uh, meaning if you were to perform some of these acts. Leaking bid or proposal information to a particular vendor to the exclusion of other vendors, not following established policies and procedures when approving change orders. So, there's a lot of great things in this document. I encourage you guys to take a peek at it. It would save us a lot of headache if we went through it and just adopted what we feel is the best fit for Kaysville.
I guess a comment on that, I, I don't disagree that, uh, all of that in state code is, uh, are good controls. I actually have to live under that. We're doing a current RFP under those rules right now.
Yeah.
Having said that, um, for most bids, fortunately, we have the purchasing department, a rather large department in the state that, um, that administers that policy. I think also, though, Kaysville is not, it's not necessary to adopt the, all the elements of state procedure or state code in Kaysville because by reference, uh, the applicable portions that are required by, of municipalities, that are applicable in state code, and I don't mean to be an expert on, I'm not an expert on that, but I'm sure that by reference, a lot of that state code also applies, certainly in principle. I do agree with Councilman Page, too, that I think our, I definitely don't want to create a document that makes it down to the end of the stairs fastest, just for that purpose. But on the other hand, it is broad. Uh, the advantage of a broad policy is it is highly efficient. The, the disadvantage of a broad policy is that there's maybe too much room for interpretation sometimes and you, you could need, you need to strike a balance between having enough guidance. But to the extent that there are additional things in state code maybe not required of municipality that we want to incorporate in, in the Kaysville policy, I think that's maybe not something, certainly not something we write in this meeting, but certainly something we should be open, open to and looking and making sure that our procedures are, first of all, in accordance with what's required, the minimum requirements under state code. Definitely want that. And then if there's other procedures, even from other cities in Utah or other, uh, things that are going on, those should be, I guess the question is, who should evaluate that? And I, I also like Councilman Page's idea that, well, our city manager, you know, should be tasked with maybe, with his people evaluating some of that, whether it's the, whether it's John currently bef, uh, before he retires in the end of June or whether it's the new city council person. And, and it can be continued, or not, not new city, the new, uh, city manager. But we can also, uh, tweak this going forward. In other words, it, it's never going to be the end, right? You're, you're always going to be evaluating it.
A living document idea, that's what's great about it.
But I, I do agree that we, we should have some, uh, expert input on this and not, not try to rewrite it on our own. But I, I don't disagree that there could be things that we, that could be referred to in state code as well.
Yeah, I, I actually, I really like a lot of this that's in here. I know it seems big and, um, extreme, but looking through it, all it's doing is covering every aspect of every scenario of what could happen. Now, Kaysville, for the most part, doesn't deal with a lot of the things that are in here. Maybe once, twice, you know, for years. And, but, the scenario would be listed on how to deal with it if it did come up. And then if you needed to change it, you could, so...
Or by reference to state code.
Yeah, yeah, so, so there, I mean, it's to be really looked over. There's a lot of good stuff in there.
Yeah, I reviewed it, there really is, you know, and, uh, I, I would pose a question to you, Councilmember Garn. Is, is the minimum satisfactory to you? Is that what you would want for your hometown? You know, or while we try, I'm, I'm sure, I, I believe we should raise the bar. How do you feel?
Yeah, I guess I don't look at it in terms of minimum. All I meant by the minimum is we need to make sure that we are meeting minimum state code requirements with regard to the state code. Then if there are other things that are appropriate to look at in state code, then that's fine. And then I ask the question, who should look at that? Should it be only the city council or should we be in more of an advise and consent kind of role where we have, where we utilize our professional staff, uh, to do the jobs that we're paying them to do and then have them bring back a draft or recommendations and then review that, rather than us personally writing it? So...
Yeah, I, I think what, you know, Susan expressed is, is great, though. You know, what about those, those what-if moments and you, and it's already there and we're not constantly, I believe this should be a living document, but not every other month changing living document. So this is a, this is a big seatbelt for the city.
You know, I, I think a great idea would be, um, if we take this, each of us, and, and kind of go through it separately and pick out the pieces we each like. And then we can meet back together or we can turn it into staff and have them compile that and then we can go through it and that could be a great starting point to really get this stuff implemented and do it right. Because I'd like to see us do it right.
That makes sense. I think the only other comment that I would make, though, is that I would be a little more inclined to look at best practices for municipalities rather than the state code. So there's an interface between municipal code, the municipalities are a creature of the state, right? They're created and in Utah, they're given fortunately a little bit more, although that's always under assault, I guess, to some extent by the legislature, but they're given a little bit more, uh, authority to make local rules at the local level than maybe some other states that prescribe much more what a municipality can and can't do and what rules they will follow. So, I think that municipalities, we ought to be looking at, I've looked at a few of them, but we ought to be looking at those, too, rather than just the state. Because the state's a different animal, the county's a different animal. To the extent that, that you've got a core principle, I'm not arguing that, but to, to extent, to the extent that you've got obscure state code that's dealing with state issues that don't apply in the municipality, I don't think you'd want to be considering those or taking it all lock, stock and barrel. Much of it even deals with, um, municipalities and what they can and can't do, what they have authority to do. So I, you know, county's different than state, federal's different than, federal's different than state, state's different than county, county's different than a municipality.
And thank goodness.
Yeah, you know, is, is there a document out there that we can go off of for a skeleton of what we can put together from municipalities? Or is this what we only have to go off of?
Good question. I don't know the answer to that, Dean.
Can I, can I talk about the history for a little bit about purchasing procedures? Back in 1989 is when we first adopted our purchasing procedures. And at that time, it was a, a flow chart and you can go back and look at the old dot matrix printer to, to verify that it was 1989. And it was similar to this and had, had thresholds. At that time, the threshold for open market with no bids or quotations was between zero and two thousand. The open market for, uh, bids and price quotations went from two thousand to eight thousand. And formal contract procedures were eight thousand or greater. That was in 1989. In, in 2010, uh, based on the direction from the purchasing, uh, procedures is we, we reviewed several municipalities. We reviewed their purchasing procedures, I think, at that time, as I recall, the one we liked best was North Salt Lake. So we took our, our flow chart and took their text and created text for our purchasing procedures and, and modified the flow chart to, to meet the text. So in, in some regards, we, we did that, uh, five, six years ago. Not that we don't need to do it again, but that was the process that, that we took at that time. And those are the thresholds...
Just a point of clarification. So from eighty-nine to 2010, was it largely unchanged or were there versions in there?
There were no changes. It was unchanged, twenty-year of history and, or better, yeah. Uh, in 2012, uh, we, uh, took another look at it. And, and as you recall, that was a time when there was some discussion about purchasing procedures, about using local bidders and, and different things. There was a, a question, uh, put to the state auditor's office about purchasing procedures. And, and they looked at it and said, "We love your flow chart. We're not sure the text really matches your, your flow chart." And so with that input from the state auditor's office and that input from, from citizens and contractors, we, we changed the, the text document to, to more closely match the, the flow chart. And, and that's been in place since, I think it was May of 2012 when, when that was adopted. And, uh, generally, I, I think the, the procedure that, that we have in place is, is very much in line with, with other municipalities. Uh, the flow chart's very much in line. Uh, I think the real question becomes, how much oversight does the council really want to have? Um, are, are, are levels, um, appropriate for, for the governing body? Or would they like us to see, uh, the levels adjusted? I, I think that was the takeaway that I had after, um, our previous meeting on purchasing procedures. And, and the question was raised, "Well, what level should it be?" And, and then we tossed around some different ideas and Councilmember Page said, "Well, it ought to be fifteen thousand before, uh, anything over fifteen thousand ought to be brought to the city council." to be 15,000 before, anything over 15,000 ought to be brought to the city council and that's what we're operating under. There's still some confusion in our mind whether that's true with the formal contract procedure or the open market and how that interfaces. So that's kind of the history that has taken place with purchasing procedures. I may be out of line in making a suggestion, but I think the suggestion I would have is, let's determine what threshold the council is comfortable with before expenditures are made. You know, if you're buying a piece of equipment and it's $20,000, do we do that with or without council approval? Just let us know what threshold it needs to be and we'll meet that requirement. So I think that's from my perspective where we need to be.
Yeah, Dean, I just have a question for you. As I was looking through South Jordan, Layton, a couple of other cities as well, I can't find anywhere where, I mean, I can find a lot of information in the cities where it says the city council can basically override any of its purchasing procedures and do whatever it wants, run the town into the ground if they want, because they're the council, the governing body, but you know, lots of restrictions on what city manager or department has as far as purchasing is concerned, but I can't find anywhere where explicitly, and maybe it's there and I'm just missing it, where city councils, they sort of pick and choose, but there's no like the level that says if it's over and above this level, most of them seem to turn over management to whoever the day-to-day manager, whether that's the mayor in a strong mayor form or to the city manager, but they don't appear to have the city council, you know, approving threshold decisions, you know, that's something that's under audit. So am I missing something there? Do other cities have their city councils approve each expenditure above a certain level or, other than in, after the fact in the, or the check run report that we get? So.
No, I think, I'm not sure how to answer that, it'd be very similar to what we have in place, is that, you know, anything over $50,000 is direct council approval, now if it's a service contract or something like that, then it's $25,000.
And so that's similar to other cities, having the city council and, some of them are quite a bit more voluminous than Kaysville, so.
Yeah.
Missed that, thank you.
So you're saying it was zero to two grand till 2010? Is that what it was?
For formal contract procedures?
No, informal.
Formal, prior to 2010, it was $8,000.
That was the maximum, that was the line between the two bids?
That was the line when it went to formal contract procedure.
And zero to two was the, just do it?
Mm-hmm.
And that was 2010?
Prior to 2010.
Prior to 2010, it was that way, so zero to two, then two to eight, and then above eight.
Yeah, in 2010, the thresholds went similar to what we see now, zero to five, no quotations, five to 50, three bids or three price quotations, 50 or greater formal contract.
Do you recall any of the reasoning behind that at the time, why the amounts were increased?
I think it was just the evaluation and we looked at other municipalities. Again, I recall looking at North Salt Lake and said, we really like what they have, we talked to the finance people in North Salt Lake and they said it works well and there were others that we looked at and that's the determination we made that that was, that would be an appropriate level at that time.
Yeah, and let me just say, I absolutely do not care where those, as an absolute value, where those amounts are. This is a matter of getting it right and I think the one danger we have, sort of just picking an amount, is that we don't consider the whole workflow. So if it makes us much less efficient, but does not add any appreciable measure of control to lower that amount to what it was 20 or 30 years ago, that is not being a good steward of taxpayer dollars to make the process itself much less efficient because if you, like in reading some of these change orders that come up with water lines that needed to be replaced, waiting four years for one project, then adding it to a project after you already had a bid, to, you know, delay that sort of decision-making, and this is way different, what I'm discussing, the efficiency is way different than if you have some of these things which are clearly, and if that occurred, and I don't know that we, I should state, have any evidence that any of that, at least I have not seen any evidence.
You've been offered it, for the record. Multiple times?
I would disagree with that, Councilman Adams. I haven't seen anything that shows me that there is cronyism or any of these other things, but.
That's not the topic of today.
But definitely, that's a different thing than when we're talking, those are controls, protections against employees committing fraud or taking things for personal benefit.
Whoa.
Or whatever, but.
Say that.
Well, I'm just saying that that's why a lot of those particular controls are there, but we're talking about at what level the city council needs to get involved in day-to-day management and that's what I'm concerned about when you look at workflow and it also, it sort of takes the ball, it sort of takes our eye off the ball on what we might hold the employees and the city manager accountable for, which is making the processes more efficient, the workflow, not just the procedures, but actually being able to demonstrate with real metrics that over time, either through software programs, through better choice of materials, like the mayor was talking about, using the smart meters, that in the long run, if we put those in now, it's going to be much less expensive. If we put in certain pipe that is maybe 20% more expensive, but lasts twice as long, well, that's a good investment, so, you know, or workflow processes, those sorts of things that, and all those things are things that we could consider, rather than just the level at which the city council needs to get involved in day-to-day operations.
Mr. Garn, could I ask you on the record, are you an expert in piping materials? You made a statement.
No, I'm not.
Certain materials will outlast other materials, are you an expert in that field?
No, but I've talked to some people who are and I have a study right here where that's the whole purpose of the study, it's a purchasing study on water infrastructure replacements and that's where I got it from, but I'm clearly not an expert.
Just wondering.
Are you an expert, Councilman Adams?
No, just a dirt worker, sir.
Okay.
So if zero to 2K, okay, for go ahead and get her done, and 2K to 8K worked great for the city till 2010, how does your argument hold water that saying 50K in one leap, that's $42,000 from the percentages, how do you justify that in one leap? And how do you then hold weight with your argument that 15K doesn't work? We went 21 years at 8K maximum, don't spend a penny more without coming to this panel, okay? Now you're telling us that five years later, five or six years later, that's just preposterous, how did that ever work? You know, it's preposterous that we want to go back from 50 down to 15K, we are not going to derail Union Pacific here.
Well, I wanted to defer to the mayor, point of order, I don't want to argue back and forth with you Dave, but I never said some of the things you just said, I never said that the policy back then was not appropriate. I was not here then, I did not make that assessment.
But you did say.
You were implying that that's what I said, which is not the case.
Wonderful, I stand corrected. Great. What I'm implying is, you're saying that the city's going to derail, but it worked till 2010. I mean, you think about 2010.
Also not my words, I'm not saying the city's going to derail, I'm just saying that you reach a point where if you have too low of a threshold that the city council has to approve those, you're going to slow down the process, you're going to make it more, less efficient and you're going to cost the taxpayers more money, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I say to that, stay tuned about costing taxpayers more money, Jake.
What does that mean? What is that mean? What are you talking about specifically? What are you talking about?
It's a topic for about 30.
You can't just make general comments, you know, later we'll talk about.
Who says I can? Do you ever, can you get the rulebook out on what I can and can't do?
Well, you can say a general comment, but it's frankly meaningless, okay?
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. I'm a man of humble circumstance, Mr. Garn.
All right, let's get the discussion over here.
Please do.
Hey, one, let me tell you one of the things that I have concern and I think that this would be a good thing and I know that other cities do this. For example, in section 3C, it talks about, you know, acquisition procedures, one of the things it talks about is we don't have contracts for services dealing with our architectural, engineering, legal, computer programming or other professional or technical services. And, you know, I understand the reason why, to a certain degree, but I do know that most of the cities, they have yearly contracts, for example, I know with our garbage, we have a yearly, we have either a year or every two years contract with them, but just like last year, we didn't have competitive bidding to allow other people to bid against that, we just renewed the contract. I think that these are kind of things I'd like to see in this, to make sure that even in our legal and stuff, we could have a year contract, you know, our engineering and everything and I know we have good IT guys that actually work for the city, but.